Hey folks, we'll call order our special city council workshop. Are there any public comments that were listed? None. We're gonna change the order of the agenda just slightly. We're gonna ask that the Excelsior building comments and update come first. Mr. Empius, are you reporting on that?
Yes.
Good. I'm right here. And I know there are a number of follow-up activities that the last time we had our conversation that you and your team were getting together. So, tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening to me again. I can say right now that I was expecting my other team members, Pastor Hammond and Lorenzo Heathon, they're not here yet, but I hope they'll come because they'll have a follow-up to what I'm seeing.
Okay.
But I can tell you in regard to the, my role is to set to look at the 501(c)(3). And we have met and we have now registered with the state of Oklahoma. So we will be continuing through the process until we complete it.
Do you have any idea what typically takes the timeframe to get that 501(c)(3) completed?
No, I had contacted Price Purvis, who was assisting in this.
Right.
And said that we would probably need that kind of schedule, but he hasn't returned my call. I understand now that he has another job and is kinda keeping it kinda busy, but I know he will.
Mr. Mayor, I talked to Price and he said it's hard to predict with IRS. It could be anywhere from two months to 12 months based on, you know, what's going on with them. So, it might be a guess as to exactly when the IRS will accept it.
Okay.
He doesn't see a problem with that, he just sees, you know, we don't know the timeline.
Thank you.
So that's according to Price.
Okay. All right. Very good. One of the other of that conversation was talking a little bit more about developing a specific plan for the building and has there been much, any more discussion with your group about that?
No, no more. You mean the plan for the programs or the plans for the?
Plans for the program.
The program. The history remains the same so far. Until such time we get it all together, to get it really complete, I will give you any updates that I will have.
Okay.
But the plans right now sounds pretty solid. I think they sound good and we can work there.
Okay. I got a question. On the 501(c)(3), when you actually submit that, you have narrative and information specifically saying what you're gonna use?
Yes.
This for, is it possible to get some of that information?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, but in the future?
Sure.
That would give us a lot of info as to what you guys doing.
Oh, absolutely. Sure. What we do is to register with the state, then we have to do the 1023, your bylaws, which will carry a lot of information.
Yeah.
And we should have that, so.
That would help us a lot.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Good. And I think there was some discussion too about the application for the historical designation?
Yes, I am working on that. I have all the research done for the historic significance portion and that part's been drafted, so I need to finish up all the other sections. I'm excited to have two to three months to finish that section and be able to submit it, so it's a process we're doing.
Okay. We have a kind of a verbal indication that it would have a good chance of being designated as an historical building?
We do have the letter that says that they do, the state does feel that it is eligible, which is just a preliminary step. When we actually submit this paperwork, they can do final determinations. And that's a pretty long process once we submit it, because they only meet a few times a year in their time schedule. It's a little hard to tell you right now.
Okay. All right. And does that designation have an impact on whether or not the city can sell the product, property?
No.
No.
No. It doesn't have any bearing on what you can do with the property. It just shows it's historically significant and is sometimes used to as a grant type of thing. It's just really a tool.
And why does it take two or three months to complete the application?
It doesn't really, it's just that I do, I do a lot of other things and I've only, I only do the Historical Society a very little amount of time, about 40 hours a month total. And I work on several of the projects. And it's just a matter of crossing all the i's, dotting all the t's. There's several sections I haven't printed at all yet.
Okay.
And just making sure everything is by the book so it goes through the process easily.
Okay. All right. Good.
Is it for the site or the building for significance?
For the building.
For the building.
And on the city side, we were doing some research to make sure that actually the city had title of the property, I believe?
We do, at Logan County, abstract due search, we do have a deed to the city, so the city owns it. It's kinda interesting, it's subject to a mortgage in like 1912 for $2,500, so the interest is probably 50 million by now. Now, that, we own and free.
Bring it on.
Okay. So that clarifies that.
Look, can I share something else with you that we did since that time? We've had the favor alumni old school reunion and I had the opportunity to share what we were talking about here today with them and they're so excited and they are, right there they wanna know, I know this can take some money, what can we do? So I'm telling them that we want to wait, that I don't want to receive so they can get credit, whatever they want to do.
Okay. All right. Good. And I believe there, the city has also done some lead paint testing?
We contracted with the EMI, I believe, to do both lead and asbestos testing. And they have now, today they collected the samples for asbestos and last week I believe they did the paint and we should get a report in a week and a half.
On all of it?
Yes.
On both, both issues?
Yes. And in talking to the, my God, working bees that were pulling the samples, I mean, they're knowledgeable, you know, this might be, this might not be. It sounds like, you know, this is just total preliminary and, you know, but there's one sheet of vinyl when you walk in and that might, that could have asbestos in it, you know, and then that same flooring, if you will, is in the men's and ladies restroom. And then there's a ceramic baseboard going around, it's ceramic, and they thought that there might be lead in that, but even if there is, it's probably not, just because it's there doesn't mean that that's a dangerous situation, like paint, it could chip and you could get ingested or inhaled, so. But we'll have a, we should have a final report that we sent to the planning department in about a week and a half.
And just for clarification, the lead part of it was actually tested, I'd probably say close to three weeks ago. We were kind of working around the EMI timeline and if you know anything about their business, they kind of revolve around disasters and so a lot of different things could pop up. This is just as quickly as what they could get us in for the asbestos.
Okay. All right. Good. Good. Do you have anybody else?
No.
None of your, none of the rest of the team issue?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
All right. Good. I think given that we will have some city information available shortly, but the, I think the key element is the 501(c)(3).
And we can continue to work with that.
Okay.
And I'll let you know upon completion.
Okay. I think we, maybe we'll put this on a workshop maybe in a couple of months for you to give us an update on where you stand and maybe you will also have a little bit better indication on the historical application for the building. We will absolutely have the information on asbestos and the lead or already have that.
So let's talk for a minute if it all comes back clean. No asbestos, no lead, they got the 501(c)(3) going and the whole nine yards. I mean, what do we do then? And I guess that's more of a question for Randall. I mean, we can't just give the building away. It would have to go to a vote, I would think.
Well, it's under 25,000.
The value would not have to go and go to a vote, because the appraisal we had was under 25,000.
But giving a city asset?
Well, the question, you really can't give an asset away, but I think we could work a deal to sell it for a nominal fee, but we would have to put in provisions that we'll have to all agree to and draft whereby it's for historical purposes and your new 501(c)(3) would assume certain responsibilities that the city, even though not the owner, would still supervise or have some supervision, so that if the 501(c)(3) didn't do what they said they were gonna do, we may have a reverter clause in the conveyance. So we'll, and another option would be, I think we wanted out of our, we don't have the money to fix it up, so we want it out of our care and custodial duties, but a long-term lease might satisfy what you wanna do everyone and, but if we can, if everybody wants to convey it and we convey it with the proper consideration back to the city and the supervision that the city would have on historical purposes, I think we could figure that.
How confident that you'll work it out?
Yeah, well, we have worked it out between the city and your 501(c)(3), because everybody, before we, before we did a sale, you'd have to know what your obligations were and understand that if they don't happen in five or six years or even a year, that it might revert back to the city or even 25 years.
I do recollect one other issue and that was with turning the air conditioning on in the building. I believe that has been accomplished.
Yes, we were able to, yep.
So that will at least minimize any further damage to the building, but we still need to move on this as expeditiously as we can.
Thank you so much.
I know the chair group feels the same way.
Oh, sure. You've gone a long ways.
Okay. Any other questions by any members of the council here? Okay. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the budget draft. It was sent out to everybody in their, in their, I think, Dropbox and then maybe also via attachment to email.
It's too large to email, so that's why I put it in Dropbox.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good. This is just a preliminary discussion about the, about the budget. This will be on the, on the actual official schedule in September.
Yes, the first meeting in September will be the public hearing.
Okay. So I guess I will just open it up to anybody that has questions about any of the line items that are on the, on the budget. It was, I think, looked like a good process that was gone through, the product that you've given us, Kim, comparing last year's budget and what was actually spent in the proposed budget is, I think, a very nice document. So appreciate your efforts and all of your staff's effort in putting that together. I guess I'll just open it up for anybody that has questions on any of the line items and, and we have, we do have a little bit of a time crunch. At 6:30 we need to suspend.
Sure, I'd just like, I'd just like everyone to know, I've reviewed the budget over the last couple of days and it looks like it's in line with all other municipal budgets that I've, I've been able to gather over the years and put together. So again, I want to reiterate what you stated, thank to Kim and the rest of the staff to put this together even before I got here. So, as I go through it over the next couple of weeks, feel free to review it yourself and if you have any detailed questions, let me know and Kim and I will get together and try to answer those. Then I'll try to have a city manager letter that goes along with every budget that has to be submitted to the state of Oklahoma, detailing any other portions that you guys may have asked about, area, other portions of the budget that I see that I want you guys to take a look at and we'll go from there. So, again, more than anything else, it is a balanced budget, which is the state requirement. And as I go through it and as you guys go through it over the next four weeks, we'll learn and grow together and we'll come to a synopsis that hopefully everyone pleases there one in a couple of weeks.
Okay. I know that's impossible.
Nope, we're gonna be here all the time, so.
That for our, for our viewing audience, that of course is the voice and face of our new city manager, Bruce Johnson. Welcome to the team and to our city and I'm sure we'll be hearing lots from you today and in the future, but again, welcome.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Okay.
We're losing to put that budget together in two days, aren't we?
Woo!
It's a pretty specific task.
They want stuff to read in two days.
Oh, I know that. It speaks for others' staff.
It is.
Yeah. It sure does. It sure does. Any particular items that anyone here wants to talk about?
Yeah, 'cause I tried to include a summary and also what capital we were able to include and the capital that was asked for that didn't make it into the budget.
Which were a number of things, of course. Numbers of things that didn't make it versus the ones that did is quite larger than the ones that did. Just some questions in the, in the police, on the police lines. Kim, it looks to me like in police operations, we spent or anticipate spending at the end of this fiscal year, a little less than $800,000 in the operations sub-element and we're budgeting for almost a million, 991,000. What, what is that increase? Actually, we're.
What page is that on? Did you, or who are you drawing?
He's in the general fund.
I don't know. I was making notes yesterday, so.
He's in the general fund.
Okay.
Tolls, I'm looking at toes, so. I was looking at front page toe.
Thank you. So police operations, that, you're talking about just the department or the entire?
Yeah, just the department.
I guess I don't know what numbers you're looking at, because I don't have those.
Well, it was, it was 749,000. What was actually spent this, or anticipated being spent this year?
794.
794?
Well, the budget was.
That's where it is right now. Budget was, yeah.
It's, I can tell you.
Then the 991 is what we're budgeting for, for next fiscal year.
And I, I'm just gonna speak for you, Don. I believe it's because we've had, we've had so many vacancies this, this past year, so probably a lot of that was salary savings.
Were you anticipating hiring folks to fill those gaps? Someone coming here that was chief?
I've done, addressed that.
Well, originally when the budget was made last year, it was, I mean, the budget was X amount and then as we grow closer to the end of the year and we do a budget revision, we trim out all the excess because we need it redistributed to other places within the city. And then as we project for next year, obviously we grow the budget back out to where the spots are allocated. And as we sit right now, we are full, but because we're so close to the end of the year and we're only now being full, we, we don't need, from now until the end of September, we don't need to pull them out because we went so long being five to seven officers down for so many months.
So it is that gap between, it's reflected in vacancies?
Yes.
That you, therefore save salaries?
Vacancies is where it's at.
Not a good way to save salaries, not, not any way that you want to do it.
Yes, and for that budget, for the budget year that we're in, Serena had budgeted for an additional person inside the police department that never got filled.
Okay.
And that was, and that entire salary's been pulled out, so, plus all the vacancies that we had, so.
Okay. All right.
So, go through, real quickly, I just want to talk about the reductions on the summary page, starting with the capital outlay. That's a pretty serious reduction.
And I, I want to contribute that to grants and, because if you see grants, the miscellaneous funds grew by almost a million dollars. And so more than likely, that capital outlay carried last year actually had some grant projects funded in it and so you're just seeing it in a different spot. That's their grant projects.
The reduction?
Uh-huh. And it was.
I guess I don't follow.
Consumer line, yeah, we had budgeted last year, it was.
A million dollars.
I think it's 1.5 million, actually. We had budgeted 1.5 million in capital outlay. That never happened. I mean, I guess in this year. And so.
So where did that money go? That just sits in the general fund?
It's not money. It is anticipated grant revenue coming in that we didn't.
Okay, okay, I'm with you on that.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. And then as far as, I mean, do, any other questions?
Well, yeah, then it looks like you've reduced administration, it looks like you do, reduced community development. I just want to get a feel for how those reductions happened.
In community development, well, we reduced it by a person. And I'm not, I'm not sure what else we reduced, we took out of that. The economic development was also included in that as well.
Economic development was in community development?
Yes, is now included in community development.
So we reduced that 163,000. So the actual in 15 was 390,000.
Mm-hmm. That's, yeah, actual.
And we're anticipating 226 for 16.
Yes.
But that's a pretty serious reduction in community development. I'm just curious where that went, how we got to that kind of reduction.
In the, in the budget itself, you'll see the changes in community development and economic development, we included together. And so between the two. It's mostly economic development.
It's code enforcement transition, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Code enforcement transition.
Yes, and code enforcement moved out, that's right.
That's pretty much two bodies that are not, two salaries that are not included in this year's budget that were included in last year's.
Code enforcement moved the police.
So wouldn't that be picked up in the police?
Yep.
Because there is, you can see there's a difference up here, so it was picked, you see where it was picked up.
That's part of that 212,000 increase under total police is where that, it just got moved from one department.
I was, I was curious, not necessarily a budget question, but on the beautification enhancement in the parks, that there was 245,000 was budgeted last year?
That's the, yeah, that's the downtown improvement project that the council before had said that the, the sales tax that was made from Muffin &amp; Sons could take that money and use it for a one-time project and it's the downtown improvement project.
But none of that got spent?
A little bit of it did, this, this past year, like 20-some thousand engineering or architectural fees.
A lot of the delay and why that's being spent is back in, I think, early 2015, I brought to council the opportunity to apply for a grant through ODOT and ACOG and they still have yet to release that grant. And so that, it's a 2080 match.
That's the one for the circle.
The downtown improvement, the Muffin House, the blockability, that's kind of the interpretation.
So we're waiting on that approval?
We're waiting on the grant to actually be released.
Okay. Is there a difference between approval and release?
They have not, we have not.
Been approved?
We have not even got to apply.
Yeah, you gotta apply first.
At this point. They have not released the grant for anyone to even apply.
Oh, the opportunity to even apply. I got you.
And we're, we're expecting 775,000 to go along with the 218,000 that we have budgeted.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
And that is actually not being funded by the sales tax revenue that we're projecting. It is coming out of what we call fund balance, because it's sales tax that we collected in 2014 and that is sitting in our general fund account. And so that's how that is being funded, because that's what we, the council had said, that that's what they wanted to use it for.
Can you create an account that, you know, we're waiting on money for something else and it goes into next fiscal year? Can you create a, a line item or a place where you can save that money? It's not stabilization, but it's, does that make sense? So we don't get in trouble for using money from the previous year? Does that make sense? Is there any way to?
That's what that is.
Have it sitting there? But that goes to the general fund and we kind of move it around and?
And, and we can, I mean, we can restrict it. We have to do that by ordinance. We can restrict it.
I don't know if that would be better or would it just not matter? I don't know.
As long as you guys have a budget in there and you guys approve the budget, then it's gonna be set in stone until you guys do anything else with the money, so.
I just thought it'd be easier to trace, rather than throw it in general fund and then go, oh yeah, don't forget, we have this money. It would just allocate it and we'd know, oh yeah, that's been subsided. I just thought it'd be easier for future councils to know that.
No, and it would, in case I got ran over.
Yeah.
Not be lost.
Yeah, we know, it's just sitting there rather than on memory. So is that something you can look into doing?
Yeah. Yeah, I've actually, I mean, I've talked about it with our financial people to do something like that, so it, so it doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
And, because we told the people, I mean, that's what we told the citizens, that's what we were gonna do with it.
What do we call that? What kind of, what do we call that line item or?
Restricted.
A restricted fund?
Oh, yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah.
Okay. Good. I noticed on the, I think it was called vacation buyback in HR, that there was a significant increase in that. Did you consolidate, is that, is that consolidation from different departments all under HR? Is that why there's that difference?
It is consolidated all under HR, yes. And we, somewhat of a guess, but we anticipated some buybacks based on vacation or retirements within the city. And we don't know if those will actually happen and not happen and Kim and I talked about it and we threw the dartboard kind of and said this. It's kind of like when we estimate for unemployment, when people might, you know, we put, I don't sit here, I can't recall the unemployment number, but, you know, typically we've said maybe 2,000 for unemployment and if, if people that had worked here before and went for another job and then they lose their job, we're responsible for that and we have to pay it. It's kind of a hit and miss in terms of how much and so, but anyway, we're anticipating, getting back to your original question, we're anticipating some, some people retiring, so then they're gonna have a big vacation build up and so we said, well, we're gonna have to pay for that, for those hours and that, that goes in there as well as vacation buyback. If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I've got a question on the stabilization fund. Where are we on that when it comes to, because I see here 775,000 on the general fund and then another, I assume a separate account of 347,000. Now, there doesn't seem like a whole lot going to it. Is that because of lack of revenue?
Mr. Penel, actually, this is what he recommended. We, if you, in the audit that you, you have, you'll see a line item that we owe the general stabilization fund 560,000. And so we could reduce that by quite a bit, but this is, this is what he recommended, so that's the adult amount that I put in.
What is an ordinance? How much can we accumulate?
Uh.
Is it a million?
It's, no, it's more than that. I mean, we're supposed to have 1.3 million.
1.3?
For, for now. I mean, it's gonna change after every year when the, the numbers are audited.
Right. And clarify, how, how much money typically goes in in a year?
We haven't.
Or by ordinance?
Yeah, we, we haven't been putting any in it since FY13.
Okay.
But we, we do have the funds to, to at least take care of what we should have put in in FY14.
Okay.
And so, you know, if we can, you know, stay a year behind and just continue to put in, then we'll eventually get caught up where we're supposed to be.
And how much is that in FY14?
240-ish.
Quarter of a fire truck.
Yep. But, but it will stay on our books that we owe that fund and it is set by ordinance.
Now, so 1.3, is that counting general fund plus?
That's just, that's just general fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about the public works?
Yeah.
So that's 347, is that also 1.3 as a max?
No. No, it's, it's quite a bit less than that and I, I don't know the number, we don't usually have very much money left. How would you be able to transfer over, so?
So are we kind of looking at it as like whatever's left over, we'll throw in this fund?
It is, it's based off our audited numbers. So it's not just whatever we have left.
It just seems like, you know, because we look at fourteen, three-thousand-eight-hundred, what we proposed, we're looking at four-thousand dollars to put in there.
That's just off interest.
That's off interest, okay.
Yeah.
So the original ordinance would tell us, fine.
Yeah, and it's a complicated formula that I wouldn't even begin, I couldn't explain it to you. It's very complicated.
So how did an ordinance get passed if it can't be explained?
I believe our financial advisor is the one who helped put it together. And he, I mean, he can explain it to you, I think he has.
Yeah, so it is complicated, and it's hard to remember exactly what the numbers were and how we about, what about it, so.
No, Bruce can fix that. No problem, I'll figure it out.
Well, clearly, the establishment of a fund, stabilization fund, rainy day fund, if you will, is essential. And we're moving, continually moving towards it. So that's, that's very positive. And regardless of how complicated the calculation is, at least we're moving in the right direction. We have got a six-thirty appointment downstairs for a little reception for our new city manager. Just, we can, we have a couple of different options on this, on our budget. This isn't going to be the last time we discuss it, obviously. We could suspend and come back after this city council meeting this evening for further discussion. Again, probably not be the last time. Or we could look at a separate special council meeting if so desired.
Can I make a recommendation? Because Bruce mentioned that he's going to be going through it over the course of the next few weeks.
Thanks, guys, dude, I'd love to have another workshop just for the fact I'll be going out with all the department heads over the next two weeks. And as I go through, I'll be carrying along my budget and asking questions about the infrastructure we have, the personnel we have, and also the projects that they're wanting to get complete in this upcoming year and in future years. And at that point in time, as I go through there, I'll know it in detail. So when you guys have your questions, we'll have more than just Kim answering your questions. I should be able to answer your questions at that point in time, so. And the communications that all this have on a daily basis as we get to know each other and build a relationship. Hopefully, I can implement that back in the budget because that is where it comes back to on a yearly basis. That no matter what we do and how we do it, all it comes back to the ink that's on the paper in that yearly fiscal year budget, so.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong.
So next council.
Just for fiscal year sixteen, I mean, this is the first time we've really seen all these numbers. We're going to see this, you know, and we're going to keep, and you're going to have a whole presentation on it, I assume? I mean, right down the road, so, I mean, we're going to see this again. That's my point.
Yeah, we'll be putting together the summary for you. I'll be putting together the highlights as I see it that I want you guys to recognize. And, but any questions you guys have, please feel free to let me know what they are, and we'll try to address those all at singular time. So we can all hear it at one time together.
So we can, I mean, we can put this on the eighteenth as a workshop item, but, you know, September second.
The next one after that is?
Is the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
And you can adopt the budget that same night.
And let's not forget, we'll be staying available here long, too. So it's not like it's going anywhere. So it can be amended at any point in time, even after it's passed.
So I think definitely.
Oh, it can, I didn't know that.
I said definitely put on workshop.
Eighteenth, eighteen.
Okay, yeah. Alright, then we will make sure that we have this as the number one item on the next workshop. And we'll go from there. There are a number of things that we are building up, folks, in our workshop inventory of topics to cover. The minutes, I think, had six or seven that are already on the list. We've got the sales tax item that we need to deal with with some urgency. And a personal issue of our water situation, not quite as urgent with the rainfall, but still something that we need to be dealing with. So anyway, we're starting to develop a backlog of topics that we need to handle, so.
Can we not have a workshop off of council, off council night?
Sure, we could.
Sure we can.
That's what we need to do and just do it.
We can, we can, that's what I said. We can have a special meeting just to talk about the budget and other urgent things, sales tax, whatever. That's certainly something we can consider, too. We'll need to get a look at people's schedules to do that. Make sure we have everybody, everybody here. Okay, but what I'm hearing is that you would rather do that rather than suspend and come back this evening. And with that, we're adjourned.